Okay, we're good to go. Seven thirty. Good evening, everyone. Ron, time is now seven thirty PM. This is the June sixteenth, twenty twenty-two work session of the Allen Dell Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who's joining us in the audience and on Zoom webinar. At this time, I ask everyone to please mute your devices so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There'll be one opportunity during this meeting for public comment, and we will advise you at the appropriate time. Linda, please read the Open Public Meeting Act announcements.
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meeting, are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building, and on the borough website, published in the record within the first ten days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the June eighth, two thousand twenty-two sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and borough website.
Great. Thank you. Linda, please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Homan.
Here.
Councilwoman Lovisolo.
Here.
Councilman O'Connell.
Here.
Councilman O'Toole. Absent. Councilman Sasso.
Here.
Councilwoman Wozinski.
Here.
Mayor Bernstein.
Here. Great. So tonight I have the pleasure of reading a proclamation. LGBTQ plus Pride Month. We're going to do this at the last meeting, but unfortunately, we didn't have a quorum, so we couldn't do it then. But on behalf of the governing body, I am pleased to read a proclamation recognizing June twenty twenty-two as LGBTQ plus Pride Month in the borough of Allen Dell. The Democratic Club of Allen Dell tied ribbons around the light posts downtown. We thank them for this. This is one of the many reasons Allen Dell is such a special community, making sure that all of our residents are recognized and celebrated. So. The proclamation reads, whereas on June twenty-eighth, nineteen sixty-nine, at the Stonewall Inn in New York City, a courageous group of citizens resisted harassment and maltreatment, setting in motion a series of demonstrations which became known as the Stonewall Uprising, and are widely considered to constitute the most important events leading up to the gay liberation movement and the modern fight for LGBTQ plus rights in America. And whereas, while the LGBTQ plus rights movement has realized much progress, there is more work to be done. As long as the promise of equality for all remains unfulfilled, all Americans are affected. If we can work together to advance the principles upon which our nation was founded, every American will benefit. And whereas, all people deserve to live with dignity and respect, free from fear and violence, and be protected against discrimination regardless of their gender identity or sexual orientation. During LGBTQ plus Pride Month, we celebrate the proud legacy LGBTQ plus individuals have woven into the fabric of our nation. We honor those who have fought to perfect our union, and we continue our work to build a society where every child grows up knowing that their country supports them and is proud of them and has a place for them exactly as they are. Whereas Allen Dell promotes a proud stigma-free community, accepting people from all walks of life. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and council of the borough of Allen Dell, New Jersey, to hereby proclaim June twenty twenty-two as LGBTQ plus Pride Month in the borough of Allen Dell. Great. Thank you. So, thank you. Thank you for understanding that we couldn't be, you know, do it two weeks ago, but we're thrilled. I speak on behalf of all of us. We're thrilled to do it again this year. Next on our agenda, we have a presentation, Cyber Incident Response Plan from Coban Computing Computers. So, a presentation from our IT consultants, Jim Coban and Tyler Yakarino of Coban Computing Computers regarding cybersecurity. They've worked very hard to put this incident response plan in place to safeguard the borough's IT infrastructure and also meet the requirements for Jif's cyber risk management program. Jim, pleasure to see you.
Pleasure to see you.
Thank you. The floor is yours.
Thank you. So, yes, we were approached with the latest Jip requirements to take us to to meet certain competencies in terms of cybersecurity, disaster recovery, and other protections we have in place for the borough. Last year, it separated into different tiers. The last year, we were at tier one. This year, I'm proud to say we are at tier two, which basically demonstrates an enhancement to our cybersecurity infrastructure and our protections across borough, across the borough, boroughwide, across all departments, including now the police department, fire department, water, the lake, municipal, municipal building, and TPW. So, just some of those things that are in place are the backups, our disaster recovery solution, our defensive software, which has been enhanced with a new type of input protection, our patch management systems, which have been enhanced to include third-party patching, and utilizing DPNs for secure remote access into the borough. So, going through, going through the joint insurance ones, requirements, comfortable and happy to say that we are, we are at tier two.
Great.
I have to ask, maybe it said, how many tiers are there?
Three. There's three. So, we were at tier one last year, and we were in a good place, especially when you compare us to other municipalities, other districts. This, this, this year, we're in a better place.
So, I don't, I, I don't know what the, what else you're going to speak to, and I have some questions, so I should, I can wait to the end?
Yeah, no, I mean, that, that's pretty much it. So, the tiers, the tiers cover a broad range of areas from access privilege, for example, so nobody has administrative rights on their workstations going forward. In the remote access, we were utilizing during COVID, different methods of remote access to a lot of people who work remotely. We're now funneling all that traffic through a secure VPN directly to the firewall, so it's all controlled and managed by us. And again, you know, when it comes to security, you're only as good as how many layers of security you have in place.
Right.
And, you know, we, we are hitting those marks. Over the last year, we also should use vulnerability scanning, which is a proactive scan across the borough, looking for holes in the network, deprecated ciphers, anything that we should be proactive about before the bad guys find those ways.
Do we, I recently read one of the, I think, a local town that had been, whether hijacked or taken over, et cetera, and then they had right, where they had to go to paper. So, yeah, so do we have, and we've had this conversation, Ron and I went to a seminar. Yeah, Jim was there and Tyler was there, right, at, at the country club at the, you know. And they, as they said, it's not a question of if, it's a question, question of when. So, should we be subject, do we have the backup plan in place?
We do. So, the server infrastructure is virtually backed up to our cloud. You know, God forbid, we do, we are attacked or infiltrated, we, we can restore, we can restore everything. It's in the day. Within the day. It depends on the amount of data. We have to restore the amount of damage. Obviously, there'll be some time looking at the issue, isolating any endpoints that have been affected, possibly removing those devices from the network, and then going into restoration mode.
Great.
But the one thing I could say is that our, our clients who have not utilized all these different tools and technologies have been hit, the clients who have, have not, again, you know. So, we are in a good place. I mean, I feel comfortable.
So. Right. And, and that's, I mean, from our point of view, from my point of view, I mean, you guys have been very proactive. You've, you've, I mean, you're doing your stuff so we can sleep, right? I mean, at three AM, you know, the systems you put into place are catching it or out there doing it, and when we've had problems, you've, you've communicated to us, and you've gotten us up and running as quickly as possible.
Here, too, the three. I met with Jim and Tyler. The, I think, at tier one, we have twenty-five thousand deductible, going to tier two, the five thousand dollars deductible. Going to tier three would cost substantial more money than I might have anticipated to get up to a tier three, and the benefits of it, I spend very minute, and the same deductible was even smaller, I feel, and, and this program has also put other things in place prior to this, to help us be safe as we can be. So, this additional step, and we'll have meetings with the
Right.
plug in with the borough employees, the lives, and, you know, again, it only shows you with this link. When the borough opening got hit Christmas a couple of years ago.
Right.
It wasn't a borough email, it was a co, in a contract that got, one dead contractor got hit. So, again, you get everything in place, but there's no guarantees, but we have, I feel very confident with Mr. Coban and Tyler's expertise and professional and cooperation, Mayor and Council.
Right.
When he paid for this, we, we've done everything we can.
That's great. And, and the distinction is not lost on me for all of us, that right, the deductible difference between twenty-five thousand and five thousand is a big number, should we need it. So, that's great.
I, I have a question. First of all, is there any protocols we could, we should follow? So, like, for example, when you go to a hotel, they always say that network is not really secure, you know, in, in conferences, rooms like that, is there anything that we should kind of do or not do? And my second question is, what about our phones? Does it make a difference with our phones, using our borough emails and accessing boxes and stuff?
So, in regards to Wi-Fi, I mean, you know, there's that saying that security is everyone's responsibility. You just gotta really be careful when you're on a public Wi-Fi. Careful with the information you put out there. Nothing's free. If you see a free Wi-Fi and you're not signing up for something, I'd be weary of that. We have a, we have something called a cybersecurity primer, which we can distribute boroughwide. It's just a, a how-to PowerPoint, just a reminder to everybody, you know, how to, best practices, password policies, things of that nature. We can get that out to everyone. It covers that.
Yeah.
In terms of the phones, when you're on Wi-Fi, you are protected by our web filter. So, anything borough-wide inside the borough is filtered.
On this Wi-Fi.
Correct. This Wi-Fi, yeah. So, or the other buildings, but it, we, we do filter that traffic. In terms of email, all, all email goes through a third-party company called Titan, which performs scrubbing of the messages, looks for viruses, looks for banned attachments, looks for phishing attempts, scans the URLs for any malware or ransomware on the other side of that URL before it's delivered to the exchange server, before it's delivered to you in the boxes. So, even there, we have protections in place. My recommendation is, do you see, see something suspicious? Just kill it. Yeah.
Yeah, we have seen a couple. And then as far as like our software platforms that are in the cloud, like Box and Crestwood Capture Point, same thing?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll do a review of that as far as who's got access and the password strength of those, of those platforms. There are backups inside those cloud platforms, called shadow copies. So, if the data was hit or affected or whatnot, you can restore from those platforms as well.
Great. Thank you. No. Thank you so much. Very much appreciate everything you do.
Thank you so much.
Public comment. This is the first of three opportunities tonight for the public present to comment. Anyone from the public wishing to speak, please come to the microphone at the podium, state your name, and address for the record, you'll have three minutes to address the governing body.
Good evening. Jesse Veltan, sixty-eight Elbrook Drive, Allen Dell, and President of the Democratic Club of Allen Dell. Mayor Bernstein, Councilwoman Wozinski, and the rest of the council, I just wanted to thank you for giving us the approval to do the ribbons for the second year in a row and for adopting the proclamation again. It was very well received last year, and again, this year, we've, you know, in person, when we were putting the ribbons up, several people stopped and said, this is great, thanks, can I have one, take it home? Last year, we did a table outside of Goldberg's and gave out some little floating flags and pins and information and all that.
Right.
And people loved it. A couple, two different instances of adolescents stopping and saying, oh my God, I never thought I'd see this in this town. This is great.
That's great.
That was the, you know, point all along for particularly the youth in town. People in our group worked with that community, and my wife works with the community.
Right.
So, that's kind of where it came from, to try to make sure everybody knew they were accepted and celebrated and comfortable here. So, we helped break that wall down. Thanks for the role you played and helped.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Facilitating that.
Thanks for all of that, yeah, for everything you've done. Administration Agenda Review. We have a big agenda. In the regular session, we have two proclamations. One, recognizing the Girl Scouts' one-hundred-and-tenth anniversary. So, I know some Girl Scouts are here. We're looking forward to that, and National Police Week, where Amy will be reading that proclamation. We have a second reading and public hearing for ordinance twenty-two dash zero four, introduction of ordinances twenty-two oh five through twenty-two-ten, and twenty-one res, resolutions on the consent agenda, and a closed session meeting regarding two-twenty West Crescent Avenue. Does anyone have any questions about the agenda? Great. Not seeing anyone. So, before we go through the council reports, et cetera, everyone knows, Saturday, two sires ago, June four, June fourth, Allen Dell suffered a tragedy with the loss of Riley Boyle. As a father, as a parent, I can't put into words what the family, our neighbors, have gone through and are going through. What I can say is that in times like this, we need to come together as, as a community. Days like this and moments like this remind us what's important in life, to never take for granted each day and those that make each day special. I also want to take, and everyone else will get to speak, and I speak for the mayor and council, but to thank our first responders, the fire department, the volunteer ambulance corps, the police department, and our dispatchers. The heart and soul they put into protecting our community can never be understated, and our pre, and our appreciation never overstated. I also want to thank our mutual aid communities who answer the call for assistance. And on behalf of the borough, I want to send our thoughts and prayers to the Boyle family, and we'll be having a moment of silence after the flag salute during the regular session. Thank you very much for that. So, we do have some time. We have about twelve minutes. So, committee reports. Councilman O'Connell, would you like to give your report?
Thank you, Mayor. I also have Councilman O'Toole's report, too, as well, if you don't mind.
I don't mind.
For DPW, six tons of asphalt were used to patch potholes throughout the borough. Repairs were made to the HVAC units that service the quilt room in this building and in the DPW facility. And the DPW was honored to assist the holiday observers in hosting the twenty-twenty-two Memorial Day Parade. It went off awesome. And due to a large part of work done by Rich McDowell, Crestwood Lake Open Memorial Day Weekend. And Councilman O'Toole's report for Law and Public Safety, he just wanted me to express and mimic your comments, and just wanted to thank all the firefighters, all the EMS, and all the police for the job they did in that fire.
Right. Thank you.
And on behalf of Law and Public Safety, our thoughts and prayers go to the family.
Right. Yeah, thank you. And thank you for, for all that, for mentioning it. Councilman Sasso, would you like to give your report?
Yes, thank you. The Facilities Parks and Recreation Committee has not met, only because we haven't needed to. We've been talking a lot or communicating a lot, the email, Mr. Kistner, I don't want to flatter you, Ron, but, you know, he's got facilities all buttoned up with his team, the DPW and outside contractors. Properties look great, buildings are getting taken care of, the fields look great. Council President Wozinski has a great relationship with the various rec groups. So, I mean, everything's going smooth. The lake looks fantastic. I was up there today. So, a couple of things about the lake, the numbers. Revenue-wise, we're about two-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand this year, which is just a couple of pennies less than it was last year, but I think COVID seems to be less of an issue from twelve months ago. People are, I think, are going away more. So, maybe some people didn't sign up, and there's a lot of pool building going on. So, so we've lost a, you know, a couple thousand dollars there.
We still have time.
We still have time. Sorry.
Time.
Thank you. I had the first band night. I couldn't make it, but I hear it was great.
It was.
From a number of different people. Family Night is coming up on Friday, June twenty-sixth. We have new Moby Max, which I love. It's great. They're working great. They look beautiful. The lake will be open during the day, starting on the twenty-second. If, if folks are frustrated about that, it's because our lifeguards go to school. So, until school is fully out, they can get, get down to the lake. So, it's twenty seconds around.
All of our managers are teachers.
I know, and the managers are all teachers, right. Right, exactly.
Nobody to run the lake.
Thursday, June thirtieth, at dusk, there's gonna be the first movie night of the summer, Wall E. I, I don't, never heard of that.
Yes.
That doesn't mean anything, but I haven't heard of it. Saturday, July ninth, seven o'clock, Tim Geisen is playing. He's great. If you haven't seen Tim Geisen, I highly recommend you go. And then Saturday, July sixteenth, at seven o'clock, Allen Dell's own, at least, or the leader, is from Allen Dell, Midlife Crisis Band, is gonna be back.
They're all from Allen Dell. There's like, there's like thirteen of them, and they're all from Allen Dell.
Yeah, yeah. So, it's, uh, that's good. And the peace poles are, they're not a hundred percent complete, but they look real good. I went up there myself. There's a nice little bench next to it. I've tried to learn how to meditate recently, so.
That's a good spot to meditate.
It is a great spot to meditate. That there, it's, if you're looking at the bench, y'all, they're just to the left, about thirty feet or so. It's an Eagle Scout project, and again, looks really good. So, I think that's it.
And thank you, Stephen. I'm going to just add on that last part, because it makes sense. We collectively would like to recognize Porus Povary for his outstanding work to create the Peace Pole Reflection Garden in Crestwood Park as part of the Eagle Scout Project. The Boy Scouts will be hosting an official dedication on June twenty-first at six PM. All are welcome. And we'd like to thank Councilman Sasso and Councilwoman Wozinski and Ron Kistner for their assistance to determine the proper location. That's a perfect, perfect addition to our park, and will be a peaceful place where residents can reflect.
Yeah, Porus dedicated the bench to his dad, who tragically passed away suddenly while raking leaves last fall, I guess it was. And he was the scout leader. So, so there's a nice little plaque on the bench, recognizing his death.
Wanted to add that part of my report on to yours, if it made sense.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. Good. Councilwoman Homan?
Sure, thank you. The Water Committee meets bi-weekly as a group to ensure that all of the many, many moving parts of the now Veolia purchase of our water system continues to progress, and we're working as a unit to hopefully ensure that we may be able to make a late summer closing. You know, there are a tremendous number of items, and I can't thank all of the committee members enough for all the work that they do, because our professionals, you know, Ron and Ray, and our consulting lawyer, and Mike Greeland, our borough engineer, they have multiple meetings today. They had two during the day. We are always communicating by email about all of this technical work. So, it's just a lot of checklists and a lot of reviewing of documents and a lot of field work. But if anybody has any specific questions at any time, whether that be the public or amongst our group, certainly, you know, don't hesitate to reach out to me, but I feel very pleased with the teamwork that we've had, both from the Suez Veolia side as well as the Allen Dell side. So, we just need to ensure that we move this along so that we can close by the, hopefully, the end of August. The water, it's not just the Water Committee, although that's mostly what I talk about. It is also water and sewer. And we are now very deep into analysis of sewer costs and the evaluations of some of the contracts that we have, and how we interact with the utility authority who processes our sewage. And there will be lots of future meetings where I'll go into all the details, but at this point, it's, it's just a lot of work and making sure that we have everything the way that we'd like to have it. We also, the Water Shut-Off Moratorium ended on March fifteenth of two thousand twenty-two. However, prior to the shut-off of a resident's water, the law requires that we offer an installment plan for the unpaid balance, and interest fees may be applied to the arrearsages. Bill assistance and arrears forgiveness programs are available through the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. So, everyone is encouraged to visit our website where more information can be available, and this is a message that we are required to continue to share in community meetings and in publications that we put out. So, I repeat myself every time. And I'm so glad to see all of the Girl Scouts here. Yay! I love it. I have two daughters that were in Girl Scouts from daisies and their whole troops. There were between twelve and fourteen girls that were in their Girl Scout troop from the time they were daisies, all the way to they went on a camping trip at West Point when they were seniors. Mrs. Councilwoman, Council President Wozinski, her daughter was on that trip. We had a fabulous time.
Woman home and was the leader for all of those years.
So, girls, I, I'm just, I'm so happy that you're here, and I'm happy that you're in Scouts, and it's such a wonderful journey. So, enjoy it. And Ari, just thank you for your words earlier. I feel like I said I'd struggled with what was appropriate to say, and thank you so much for saying the word. So, that's my report.
Thank you very much. Amy?
Oh, I don't know if I'll be able to do it in four minutes, but I will try.
You want? Councilwoman Lovisolo, you wanna go?
Yeah, I can go quickly, because our land use committee normally meets the morning of land use board meetings, and I thought I was actually gonna be away this week, but I'm here, yay. So, we postponed it until next week. So, I will have more to report at our next council meeting on land use issues. I do want to remind everyone that the Green Team is still selling composter bins as well as rain barrels, which are great. They're currently in storage at the Fell House. So, so we have some for people if they're interested in purchasing them. Yes, you're confused.
How much is a rain barrel?
And the That's such a great question, and the price is higher than what I originally thought. I can dig it up for you. I'll get it for you by the end. But we're gonna do a rain barrel at the Fell House, which is great, because as you know, the Allen Dell Garden Club helps the Fell House maintain that area around our flagpole, so we're so thankful for them, so they'll be able to use the water from our rain barrel for, yeah, it's a great thing. I also wanted to give a congratulations, because I was able to attend the eighth grade Service Learning Project Day, and Ed's daughter was one of the wonderful projects there that day. What a great event and great thing that Mr. Goodman leads there, and there were just so many impressive projects these eighth graders did, and I honestly, truthfully, things that I think we could probably adopt here in the borough. So, it was a wonderful thing to attend. So, that's all I have.
I'm gonna plug the composting thing again, because it's so much, and you girls that are Girl Scouts, you can remind your parents, composting, taking all like vegetable waste and putting it into the green machine, and it makes really nice dirt. When I pull out my drawer, the worms are in there, breaking down the food. It's really so cool, and it saves so much weight. I just can't believe the weight of a watermelon rind, and it goes out there, and it's not in our trash. It's not going into the landfills where there's too much pressure for everything to degrade. So, Girl Scouts, you can really get the recycling and the, that going. I know it.
Sounds good.
Anytime. Yeah.
Good.
Thank you.
That'd be great.
So, what we're gonna do is, um, we have about one minute to the regular session, so rather than try to jam something in there, we're going to adjourn the work session. So, I request a motion to adjourn the work session.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Wait a second.
A second.
Thank you, Steve. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, work session is over. In one minute, don't go anywhere, we'll be starting the regular session. Okay, work session is over. In one minute, don't go anywhere, we'll be starting the regular session.
Sewer worms.
And this is the June 16th, 2022 regular session of the Allen Dell Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who's joining us tonight in person. And we do have a packed house and via Zoom webinar. At this time, I ask the public present to please meet your devices so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There'll be two opportunities for those present to speak during this meeting. We will advise you at the appropriate times. Linda, please read the Open Public Meetings Act announcement.
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meeting, are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and on the borough website, published in the record within the first 10 days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the June 8th, 2022 sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building and borough website.
Great, thank you, Linda. So we are going to rise to salute the flag. And as I said in the work session, please remain standing for a moment, a moment of silence in honor of Riley Boyle. On behalf of the borough, we offer our deepest condolences to the Boyle family and their friends. And we will continue to hold them in our thoughts and prayers. Linda, please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Homan.
Here.
Councilwoman Lovasolo.
Here.
Councilman O'Connell.
Here.
Councilman O'Toole. Absent. Councilman Sasso.
Here.
Councilwoman Wazinski.
Here.
Mayor Bernstein.
Here, thank you. And before, next is the presentation, the Girl Scouts 110th anniversary. I'm happy to read the proclamation, but Councilwoman Homan, would you like the honors to read the proclamation?
Oh, that'd be so fun.
It's, so.
But I didn't practice, so you guys all have to.
So we have the Girl Scouts, the troop leaders to come to stand. Councilwoman Homan is going to read the proclamation. We're happy to have members and leaders from several Allen Dell Girl Scout troops joining us to commemorate the 110th anniversary of Girl scouting in the United States. Scouting has a rich history in Allen Dell and building courage, confidence and character. We're proud of these girls for continuing this tradition. And it is so wonderful to see you and Councilwoman Homan, if you would do us the honor.
So fun. Proclamation on the 110th anniversary of Girl Scouts of the United States of America. Whereas March 12th, 2022 marks the 110th anniversary of Girl Scouts of the United States of America, founded by Julia Gordon Lowe in 1912 in Savannah, Georgia. And whereas throughout its distinguished history, Girl scouting has inspired millions of girls and women with the highest ideals of courage, confidence and character. And whereas through Girl scouting, girls discover, connect and take action to make their local communities and the world a better place. And whereas more than 3.2 million current Girl Scout members nationwide will be celebrating 106 years of this American tradition with 59 million women who are former Girl Scouts and living proof of the impact of this amazing movement. And whereas there are more than 200 Girl Scouts and the Girl Scouts of the United States of America, Allen Dell Service Unit, who make significant contributions to this community. And now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council hereby applaud the commitment that Girl scouting has made to America's girls and proudly recognizes the 110th anniversary of the Girl Scouts of the United States of America. And it's signed by the mayor, Ari Bernstein, mayor of Allen Dell. So thank you so much. You guys are awesome.
Managers or anything that you would like to say?
No, I'd like to say thank you so much for all of your support. We enjoy doing things for the community. And if we can ever, you know, be of service, please let us know. Composting would be a great way, you know, perhaps a start. We do have some cookies for you guys.
So. So, yeah, the picture, so we have two choices. Girl Scouts, we can either come down and take the picture with you, or if you want to come up here and stand here with the flag in the back, we could take a picture that way. You want to come up? Yeah, okay. Sure. Come on up.
I see a purple one that I like.
So why don't we? Come on in. We'll get all my stuff out of the way so it doesn't.
Are we going in or not?
Yeah, come on in.
You guys are awesome.
Are you going to be able to see?
Do we still have big races? Thank you.
That wasn't yours?
Yeah.
That's all right, my pleasure.
Hi, guys.
So much. Ally. There's a proclamation. Now, National Police Week. Tonight, we are proud to be honoring our police officers in recognition of National Police Week. National Police Week in the United States provides a time for communities to recognize the law enforcement officers who lost their lives in the line of duty, as well as a time to honor the officers who serve and protect our community each and every day. On behalf of the governing body and the residents, we salute you, the officers of the Allen Dell Police Department for your dedication and selfless service. And Amy is going to read the proclamation.
Very happy to. Whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Allen Dell Police Department. And whereas the Allen Dell Police Department plays an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of all members of the community. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent and against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of the Allen Dell Police Department unceasingly provide this vital public service. Now therefore, may it be resolved that the mayor and council hereby declare the week of May 15th to May 21st, 2022 to be National Police Week in the borough of Allen Dell and May 15th, 2022 as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice and service of their community. Be it further resolved that the borough of Allen Dell calls upon all citizens to join in commemorating law enforcement officers past and present who, by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. The mayor and council of Allen Dell publicly salute the service of the law enforcement officers in our community and communities across the nation. And this is signed on the 16th day of June, 2022 in the borough of Allen Dell, state of New Jersey, by Mayor Ari Bernstein.
Thank you very much, Amy. Chief, if you want to speak, the floor is yours. And we also want to, we can all gather around and give you the proclamation.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and fellow council members. This means a lot to us. So recently in society, there's been a lot of negative press about law enforcement. So we really do appreciate the support, the ongoing support of the mayor and council. Sorry. This has become very evident in the past month with our loss of Riley Boyle. And a lot of my employees that were involved are profoundly impacted. So we do really appreciate the support of the mayor and council. So thank you for that. And that is part of the recovery puzzle, the pieces of puzzle that we all need. So thank you.
Thank you, chief, and thank you to your men and women and for everyone. So we never, never miss an opportunity for a photo op. If you want to come down, we can. Next, public comment on agenda items. Anyone from the public wish to be heard on any items on the agenda? Not seeing anyone. Approval of minutes. Request the most to approve the minutes of. What's that? Right, I'm going to request a motion, right? Okay. So we will not.
That sounds.
Yeah. All, okay, so we're not approving any minutes. Okay. Yes. So we will table the approval of the minutes till the next meeting. Can I have a motion, please, to table the approval of the minutes to a following meeting?
Yes.
A second, please?
Second.
All in favor? Second reading and public hearing ordinance. Linda, please read the title of ordinance 22-04.
The following ordinance published here with was first read by title only on May 12th, 2022, and posted on the bulletin board of the lobby of the municipal building and borough website. Ordinance 22-04. In ordinance amending and supplementing chapter 128-8 of the Code of the Borough of Allen Dell entitled Additional Required Inspections and Fees.
Thank you. Open the floor for public comment on ordinance 22-04. Not seeing anyone, I would request a council member to make a motion to move, to pass and adopt on second and final reading. Ordinance 22-04, notice of same shall be published according to law.
So moved, Lovasolo.
Thank you. Second?
Second, O'Connell.
Thank you. Linda, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Homan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lovasolo?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole? Absent. Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wazinski?
Yes.
Thank you. Introduction of ordinances, I would request a council member to make a motion to introduce and pass on first reading ordinance 22-05 and set the hearing for June 30th, 2022 at 8:00 PM or soon thereafter in the council chambers of the Allen Dell Municipal Building.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Linda, please read the title of the ordinance and conduct a roll call.
In ordinance to amend, supplement and revise the Code of the Borough of Allen Dell, towing chapter 240-10. Councilwoman Homan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lovasolo?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole? Absent. Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wazinski?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Next is ordinance 22-06. I request a council member to make a motion to introduce and pass on first reading ordinance 22-06 and set the hearing for June 30th, 2022 at 8:00 PM or soon thereafter in the council chambers of the Allen Dell Municipal Building.
So moved, Homan.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Linda, please read the title of the ordinance and conduct a roll call.
Ordinance number 22-06. In ordinance amending and supplementing chapter 26-21 of the Code of the Borough of Allen Dell. Councilwoman Homan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lovasolo?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole is absent. Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wazinski?
Yes.
Great. Next is 22-07. Request the council member to make a motion to introduce and pass on first reading ordinance 22-07 and set the hearing for June 30th, 2022 at 8:00 PM or soon thereafter in the council chambers of the Allen Dell Municipal Building.
So moved.
Thank you, Amy. Second?
Homan.
Thank you, Liz. Linda, please read the title of the ordinance and conduct a roll call.
Ordinance number 22-07. Bond ordinance to authorize the making of various public improvements and the acquisition of new additional or replacement equipment and machinery, new information technology equipment and new communication and signal systems equipment in, by and for the borough of Allen Dell in the county of Bergen, state of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $955,000 to pay the cost thereof, to appropriate a county grant, to make a down payment to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds. Councilwoman Homan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lovasolo?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole? Absent. Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wazinski?
Yes.
Great. Next is 22-08. Request a council member to make a motion to introduce and pass on first reading ordinance 22-08 and set the hearing for June 30th, 2022 at 8:00 PM or soon thereafter in the council chambers of the Allen Dell Municipal Building.
So moved, Lovasolo.
Thank you, Suzanne. Second? Thank you, Steve. You guys are fighting over that one, right? You guys are fighting over that one, right? Okay. Linda, please read the title of the ordinance and conduct a roll call. Twenty-two.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash zero eight in ordinance of the Borough of Allendale, County of Bergen and State of New Jersey vacating a drainage easement through lot three in block three oh three, Allendale, New Jersey. Roll call. Councilwoman Homan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Luvasolo.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole is absent. Councilman Sasso.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wozinski.
Yes.
Great. And next, I want to take a brief break. So baptism by fire. So I want to thank Linda Luis Torino, our clerk. This is your first meeting here. We threw a lot at you. There's a lot going on. They're all not this, this pack, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Number two, where'd all those Girl Scout cookies go?
They really are not.
They're over there?
Oh, you said that. Now I can't. I know. I love this.
So now we're up to twenty-two oh nine. I would request a council member to make a motion to introduce and pass on first reading ordinance twenty-two dash oh nine and set the hearing for June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two at eight P M or soon thereafter in the council chambers of the Allendale Municipal Building.
So moved, O'Connell.
Thank you, Ed. Second.
Homan.
Thank you. Linda, please read the title of the ordinance and conduct a roll call.
Ordinance twenty-two dash zero nine in ordinance to amend chapter fifty-three of the Code of the Borough of Allendale, officers and employees to fix the salaries, wages, and compensation of the officers and employees of the Borough of Allendale for the year two thousand twenty-two. Councilwoman Homan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Luvasolo.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole is absent. Councilman Sasso.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wozinski.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Twenty-two dash ten. Request a council member to make a motion to introduce and pass on first reading ordinance twenty-two dash ten and set the hearing for June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two at eight P M or soon thereafter in the council chambers of the Allendale Municipal Building. Motion, please.
So moved, O'Connell.
Thank you, Ed. Second.
Luvasolo.
Thank you, Suzanne. Linda, please read the title of the ordinance and conduct a roll call.
Ordinance twenty-two dash ten in ordinance of the Borough of Allendale, accepting the street known as Weemer Court.
Yes.
Councilwoman Homan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Luvasolo.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole is absent. Councilman Sasso.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wozinski.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. For the consent agenda, it's twenty-two dash one five eight to twenty-two dash one seven eight. I would request a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Second.
Second, O'Connell.
Thank you, Ed. Linda, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Homan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Luvasolo.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole is absent. Councilman Sasso.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wozinski.
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much, Linda, and thank you for that. I appreciate that. Any unfinished business?
May I? Just one second.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor. Weemer Court.
Yes.
I just want to point out that that Weemer Court, I believe, is the last Gold Star Street to be named on our war memorial. So now with Weemer Court, every Allendale boy killed in action or didn't come back in Europe or the Pacific has now been accounted for.
Thanks for letting us know that.
I'm ninety percent sure that Otto Weemer, actually Otto Weemer was from World War One. So I don't know the details. I have to go back and look. I have records of all of it, but that's the last one. And may there never be another name added to that war memorial.
Thank you for that. Any new?
I'm sorry, on Councilman Sasso's comment. Seven years my first came here. One of the first projects on that we work on was Steve brought that to my attention. It was one of his passions. And we had to sign time. And he did a lot of homework on that stuff. And he McCurry, like it was a sister or something.
Yeah. Yeah, we met. It was great.
He did a lot of labor on that. It was one of the first things I did when I came here.
Well, I had a lot of help from you and from Mr. Liam Wozinski.
Right.
That's right. Project.
Ron, thanks for pointing it out. Any new business? Committee, council report. So I think the only one left is Amy. You have yours and I have mine. So why don't you go?
So we introduced the capital budget today. I didn't know, Lisa, had anything to comment on it. It was tough. It was really, really tough this year. Everything is expensive and our streets need to be repaved. We need striping the borough. We need, as you saw, I T improvements. We actually had money towards the fire department for turnout gear and safety equipment. We have some costs for the two twenty-two thirty, the building of two twenty. We also had our playground. There's some grant money in there. That's also put in there, but we do have to encumber the whole entire, the whole entire amount, which is nine hundred fifty-five thousand, but a couple hundred thousand of that is, is some grant money that we will be getting back. Two twenty, West Crescent. So we've had several meetings with the, with some members and leaders of the community. We've had some closed sessions with the borough. We have another closed session today. There's a lot that's been going on these past, past couple of years, the economy, COVID, the supply chain issues. So we had to really rethink a lot of things. There is a community town hall on June twenty-third where we will be unveiling a lot of the decisions in the back and forth that we have been going through. The costs were just extremely, extremely expensive, expensive, and we just didn't feel that it was right the way that we were going. So we, we took a step back, did some rethinking, talked to a lot of community leaders, and I think the community is going to be very pleased that they have to see on the twenty-third. Tonight, A R C, which is our rec commission, which is an amazing organization or town, recognizing coaches upstairs in the A B and J, but there's also an opportunity if anybody is in sports, you can put your favorite coach on Facebook and honor them there. So I think it's a wonderful opportunity to do that because they are all volunteers and it's an amazing program in our community. Also, I wanted to welcome Linda to her first day here and good luck with everything. And if you, of course, you need any support, we're always here for you. And then, of course, you know, Mayor Bernstein mentioned about the tragedy and it is devastating to Allendale and our hearts and our prayers are with the family, our hearts and our prayers are with our first responders because everybody was affected. So we are, we are here if anybody needs us for support at any time. And that's.
Great. Thank you, Amy. I'm going to do my report. I'm going, some of the things were mentioned, so I'm going to give an abbreviated report, so I'm not redundant. Opening of Crestwood Lake. Want to thank, we were open on May twenty-eighth, council member Sasso and Wozinski, the facilities committee, Ron Kistner, D P W, especially Dan Richards, Rich McDowell, and Ray Frazier, manager Tom Visguardy, the lake staff, board of health, O E M, public safety, the construction department, Tatiana Markey, John Gill, and Amanda Richards for their collaboration and tireless efforts. If you have not registered through community pass, you can do so via the borough's website or by calling the clerk's office. Memorial Day, Councilman O'Connell mentioned that. First time since two thousand nineteen that we got together as we historically did. I want to thank everyone who participated. We had a huge turnout. We had a great day and a huge turnout. I want to take a moment to thank Allendale Holiday Observers, Miguel Grande, Joe Chidichi, our D P W and emergency services for putting together the parade and the ceremony. Also want to thank the fire department for what has become a great tradition, a Norman Rockwell-like tradition in Allendale. V F W Flag Retirement Ceremony and Barbecue. Our V F W held the flag retirement ceremony and barbecue this past weekend at the Red Barn. I'd like to share an email that I received from past commander Joseph Chidichi. Dear Linda and Amanda, wanted to thank you for your assistance Friday with access to the Red Barn so that the V F W could have our flag retirement ceremony and barbecue. Lower some pictures from the event. We retired hundreds of flags from Allendale, Ramsey, and Waldwick. We hold this annually on a Saturday near Flag Day, June nineteenth. Pre-COVID, we were able to host veterans from the premise Veterans Home that came by by busload. In the past, Michelle kept this in mind before anyone tried to reserve that date. Please let me know the soonest we can reserve Saturday, June tenth, two thousand twenty-three. You got that? Signed, past commander, Allendale V F W, Joe Chidichi. Community project funding. Congressman Josh Gotheimer's office recently offered the communities in his district an opportunity to apply for community project funding. C P F is an annual process that allows members of Congress to request direct funding for projects that benefit the communities they represent. Communities, community center grant. Congressman Josh Gotheimer recently offered the communities in his district an opportunity to apply for community project funding. C P F is an annual process. Well, we've said that. Annual, Allendale applied for three point five million dollars in funding to offset the cost of our planned community center. I'm pleased to report that Congressman Gotheimer has selected our proposal and has submitted this request to the House of Representatives Appropriation Committee. The next step is now in Congress for their approval. We will keep you updated on the status of this funding as, as it proceeds. The congressman called me to let me know, and he said he's rooting for us and he will keep us posted. I want to thank the congressman and his staff along with our clerk's office, Tatiana Markey and John Gill for putting together a compelling and ultimately successful letter for a grant writer to submit. Clean Communities Grant. Did anyone say that yet? No? Okay. We've been notified that the N J D E P notified by the N J D E P that Allendale will be receiving thirteen thousand nine hundred fifty-eight dollars and forty-one cents from the Clean Communities Grant Program for two thousand twenty-two, which is an increase from last year's. These grants are funded by a legislated user fee on manufacturers, wholesalers, and distributors that produce litter generate, generating products and distributions are based on housing units and miles of municipally owned roadways. Anthony Hackett's reappointment. We were supposed to do that the last meeting, but it got carried here. I want to congratulate Anthony Hackett, our construction code official and building subcode official on his reappointment to these positions. Anthony has been an excellent and dedicated employee to the borough. We're happy not only to reappoint him, but to grant him tenure in these positions. He's been wonderful and we're happy to have him, continue to have him on board. Lastly, this weekend will be Father's Day. So to all the fathers who are celebrating and to the graduates of the class of two thousand twenty-two, congratulations to them as well. Staff reports. Ray?
Very briefly, in addition to some of the ordinances that were on tonight's agenda, all I can say is water committee, water committee, and water committee. I think the, yeah, I think the NFL started their, their mandatory practices and apparently we are on double sessions now on the water committee. But, but as one thinks about it, there's the, the main agreement proposing the, the sale to, to as now Viola, but within that agreement, there are numerous sub-agreements. There are exhibits pertinent to those. And if you think of the water system, it's an amoeba that swirls out throughout the entire community. So it's the, it's the piping, it's the equipment, it's the tanks within those that all have to be identified. Easements over public and private property have to be identified, have to have adequate meets and bounds descriptions. So when Councilwoman Holman refers to the committee being very, very active, it, it, as it turns out, getting the main agreement together is proving to be the easier part of the task than, than all of the subsets of it. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Did we pay the electricity bill?
I feel great.
Linda, any report?
Actually. I want to thank all the board workers for their dedication and commitment. I know it was a long day. The election process can only be successful when community spirited individuals give their time to make it work, and I thank you for that.
Great. Thank you. Ron, anything to report?
More good news. We had a Burton County Community Development Grant meeting last night, and I borrowed, put in an application for seventy-five thousand dollars to do the, make the two bathrooms at the firehouse handicap accessible. And we got the grant, and I will also make jam it again for another year. So.
You're a glutton for punishment.
In regards to the grant, you mentioned the fellow grant that Congressman Gotheimer, we have a former employee here who should, actually took the lead on that. Michelle Ryan, I think was right after a council, he called me about it. We discussed some where we'd go with it, and then we talked, mentioned, I actually called. Yeah, well, Amy, I don't think she was home yet. I think you're still on the driveway and generally where you go. Michelle really took the lead on that.
Right.
I'm glad to hear, and with her team there, they, she really worked as a team.
And shocking that her name is, who helped with my report, that she didn't put her name. Great. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, one more thing. And he's getting tired of hearing it. The town did goes with tragic rentals currents a couple of weeks ago, and you see, Mike, the chief, police chief has a little, a Michelle in him. He gets very embarrassed when he, we compliment him. He did my job. I mean, not only did he do his job, he was ahead of me on, you know, making the town right and making the situation best you could, you know, you can't do any more for the family than you can, but they had a funeral. I remember having a police chief out to help me set up barricades. I think Steve actually saw us.
I drove by.
Exactly. So he, you know, not only for a great job he did with his men and for the, really the head guy for the, comes to first responders.
Ron.
He's got his boots on the ground with us. We appreciate it. The guy from D P W mentioned it to me. Those guys don't mention too many things.
No, I got it. And I mean, we're all seeing the same thing and, and the day after the, the shooting where you were in your, you know, your uniform standing there at the front of Brookshead School and how we're so sad that we live at a time and a place where that has to be done, but we're so thankful that you're there and you're doing the right thing.
It means a lot to me. Thank you.
And, you know, for everyone behind you as well. I know it's a team. Lisa, anything you'd like to report?
We don't want to end on that.
Anything else? No. You're always the bearer of such great news. Thank you. Chief of Police, Mike Dillon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to take a moment to recognize seamless collaboration between schools and the police to ensure a safe educational environment for our children. I think I speak to superintendent's Dr. Park in the phone and Dr. Beckman more than some of my relatives. But it's all in good spirit, and we're working towards definitely increasing our security at the borough schools. And I have the utmost cooperation from the entire educational, the, the two boards of education.
Great.
Today was accreditation hearing in South Brunswick. I had nine commissioners basically interrogating me regarding diversity, technology, staffing, internal affairs, et cetera. After this onslaught of questions, it resulted in affirmative votes to renew our department's accreditation. So there was about twenty-five other departments with me and the commissioners all turned and asked pertinent questions. They had some pretty interesting thoughts, and I do appreciate their input in working towards our next cycle of accreditation, all right?
Great. Thank you very much for that. And thank you for everything. Tyler, webmaster and I T?
Nothing major to report other than the phone system, even though we put the phone system in December, we're actually on the process of going to the two point O version, which will be at no additional cost to the borough. Our pricing is locked in until twenty twenty-four. Pricing increases during other major changes and total falls on the system since the beginning of the year, then sixty thousand three hundred and ninety-one falls.
Great. Thank you. John Gill, Director of Communications.
Just working with their clerk's office, hopefully making a transition easier in the office newsletter. I'd like to finalize tomorrow, so if anyone has any last minute stuff, please get that to me. That'd be fantastic.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Public comment? Any public comment on any matter? Yes, sir.
Walter Whitney, three account. You have to help me here because I cannot remember the name of the street. It's off of, next to what?
Of particular, Harold.
Anybody at the end of the street, they're coming in a hole. They're honoring one of the fallen GIs World War Two. His sign is appropriate.
Ivors.
Ivors, Ivors. Thank you very much. Sign is appropriate and impressive.
Franklin.
Franklin Turnpike is not.
The other day I was driving past Savin, at North Hamilton. Car support both sides of the road. Something should be done.
Thank you, thank you for that.
Thanks, Walter.
Thank you.
Um, so we're, we're here as Crestwood Cruisers parents, I don't know if this is the right venue. We just didn't really know where to go with it. We had written some emails back in early March to Tom Viscardi. Uh, we didn't receive any responses back. I did get an email from Tom saying, um, but we addressed some concerns that we have, which we both committed to. Um, and I, the response was that he understood my concerns and would get back, and I never got a response. I think there was about, we have about forty over forty families, I guess, in cruisers, and a lot of people reached out. So the concern is with the safety of the relocation of Crestwood Cruisers. So in the past, we were on the side of the lake and, um, where the sand was, and, um, last year, they moved, last year, during COVID, they moved there to like the grassy portion, um, and there's like just some big concerns with safety and visibility. There's a ton of breeds. Um, a lot of kids on cruisers are really young and just starting out with swimming, and we really can't see our kids. Um, I know last year there was some concern, waters weren't deep enough. I think they were working on fixing that, but I think that was seen here, yeah. So we wanted to talk about sort of, just, you know, the concerns about the relocation and mainly safety, again, the reeds are still there, you can't, you can't see your kids. It's also, there's like, literally no shade, so there's, it's like, on a hot day, like, people just won't go to cruisers, it's just too hot, there's no shade. Um, there's little siblings that are running around, and we can't, like, they can't go in the water, and, you know, we just, it's like hard to watch them, and it's hot, and um, again, I don't.
So, my kids have been on cruisers for a very long time. In the past, you're able to go to cruisers, sit at the lake while your kids uh, swim and practice, and the little siblings are able to go in the lake during the practice time. You're there for about an hour. You can put up an umbrella in the sand, and, um, at the time, I think I had a three-year-old. He would go in the water while my eight-year-old would go practice. And now that we're, we've been moved, we don't have a place to, we can sit in the grass, but there's no way where to put up an umbrella or for the little kids to be able to go in the water on the hot days. So yesterday, practice, it was close to ninety degrees. Um, you just have to sit there. There's nowhere to pitch a, a tent, nowhere to put up an umbrella, and there's nothing for the little kids to do. You have to join the lake in order to be on the team, and part of the practice is come to the lake every day with your family. I have a five-year-old who's not on the team. We come to practice every afternoon thinking that they could be at the lake and play in the water while the siblings are practicing. So I have two kids who practice, a nine-year-old and a twelve-year-old, one practices from four to five, one practices from five to six, and now my five-year-old is tagging along with me, and we're just sitting there. So the coach is really kind. She says, I completely understand your concerns because we have been talking about this since March. And Tom did say, I hear your concerns. You heard them. Uh, but his answer to us is, the lanes are unsafe where they were. Cruisers has been there for many, many years. I understand that the lanes are unsafe because kids go under the docks, then put a lifeguard on the dock at all times during the time that Crestwood is open. We also understand that the lanes are not going to be moved back this summer, but help us out. He said he understands our concerns and he will think of solutions, give us some lake by the new the new lanes, give us sand, let us put up umbrellas, give us lake, do something. Now we're just there. There are no bathrooms. You do have to watch your kids in the, you're supposed to be there. If your kids are under thirteen, you have to be at practice. And if your child swims and dives, you can't be at two places at, at once. So the dive team is on one side, the swim team is on the other side. If you're a parent with kids in both, how are you supposed to supervise them? In the past, you were able to sit and you were right there, swim and dive was together. So that's an additional problem. Very neat, there's no parking. It's like, if you want to park in the parking lot, you have to walk all the way around. It's, it's just not conducive how it used to be. His argument is the lanes are not safe where they were, and they're distracting to the members. We're the members. We've built up the team, we've helped build up the team, we doubled in size last year. We are pretty active parents. We've completely changed the dynamic of the team, and we want the team to stay. And we want, we want to stay, but if we're not being heard, we were pretty much ignored this year. We're gonna we're gonna, we're not going, we haven't been to practice all week, we're gonna walk away. And we don't want that to happen. It's a great team. Years ago, I don't know if you know about the team, but we were pretty much laughed at as a team, but now we're taken seriously. Christie's really changed the team. And it's a great program, and we want to keep it up, but we're upset that we were pretty much ignored.
Yeah, I mean, I will say as well, I emailed Tom, he responded, he was like, I had a bullet point, all my responses were like, we're clearing out the area, there'll be shade, blah, 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 and then he disregarded my concern of I know that they weren't deep enough last, and he goes, that's simply untrue. So it's a concern that even last year while I took to swimming, he made accommodations that weren't necessarily appropriate for our kids, just a concern. I also have six and eleven-year-olds, and my stretch is even longer. It's brutal. We're there in the sun, being visible, because I need my kids to swim. It's a great program. We're a great community, and I feel it completely just disregarded us, which is frustrating to me. You know, because this is an important thing for us, and also I know that during COVID, they got moved, made perfect sense, great social distancing. Totally, we were, we were just so happy to be at the lake, swimming, everything. However, practice happens right now, four to seven, it's going to move to three to six. That side of the lake is not packed during the week. It's moms, it's families. On the weekends, on the occasional swim meet, we're there at seven-thirty in the morning, so we won't be interfering with holidays or weekends. So it's really not a conflict of too many people, too much crowding, which is another reason why they gave, so.
And on a Wednesday night, the meets are at five, uh, they start at six. It's not a busy time at the lake.
Because we were there all of last year in the big sun, seeing the family, you know.
Yeah, right, and I, I know, I know you want to.
So I'd like to, I'd like to address it, so thank you. Um, so thank you, thank you for coming, thank you for speaking. We love when people come, and we, we appreciate everybody's feedback. Um, I, I will let you know that this was something that we've discussed for a long time. We had lots of discussion on it, so your concerns were not ignored at all. Um, it was always deep enough. I guarantee you that. It was absolutely deep enough. We measured it ourselves, so that was never an issue. The reeds are an issue, there's no question. We, we've talked about them yesterday, we talked about them two days ago. We, we are working with them. Our DPW is on top of it and is going to keep them, um, cut at all times, so there is visibility there. Um, and we're looking at permanently removing them. As far as the concerns with, that Tom had with the docks over, um, on south, it is a concern. It's a concern because the kids go underneath it, it bifurcates the entire beach, you can't see on the other side. And he does, he puts somebody, a lifeguard floating there, and it's very, very distracting. And once we moved those over, it was a big relief for him because he was just never comfortable over there because there was a lot of different angles that he needed guards, and we don't actually have a lot of guards. That's the other problem. It's, it's difficult to get guards. So, um, you know, the, the shade issue, I, I mean, um, there is tents that it could, you know, pop-up tents that could easily be, be brought there, but the location, as far as the bathrooms, is very similar to where there's bathrooms right at, um, there's parking, and there's bathrooms right at the Red Barn. There's also the, um, tennis courts, and there's basketball courts there too for the kids to play. There's lots of beautiful fields.
Yeah, we're supervising our children's.
So, okay, so I didn't know if your kids are old enough to play kind of on their own while you're, while you were there, but there's.
A lot of little, little kids. The biggest issue is, the concern is the safety, I mean, bathrooms, we get.
So, I mean, I just.
Yesterday, I mean, the reeds are up, so you couldn't see, you can't see your kids, you know, you can't see them, so.
You can see, we, the bleachers, Richie put the bleachers today.
Is there any way to put, make it like a sandy beach, or like something where we can put some shade?
Well, I, I, I think that's something, we, we have talked about that, actually. Yeah, yeah, that was, it was definitely some budget issues with that, but we, I mean, I think that is something that we could potentially put some sand over there. I don't think, it's not going to be like a sandy beach, I don't think, like the other beaches, but there may be an opportunity to bring some sand around the area, um, maybe next year. Um, it's by the grassy area there. So, but we did, I mean, your, your concerns were definitely heard, and we did have lots of conversations about it.
I was not responded to from anybody.
Well, Tom did write an email, because I remember I was copied on an email, he was, you know, he had a ton of emails.
There's like many families that reached out about, I mean, you know, they didn't all come tonight, but they all were, reached out and.
I'm sorry, what's, what's your name?
So I'm wondering whether or not, uh, we want to, you spell to speak, talk, et cetera, and the people, is there a committee, is there a meeting, is there some, is there a better way to handle this than? Right, so I appreciate you coming and staying to the very end of the meeting, Dr., and I, and you have kids and it's late, so, but I'm wondering what, what would be, uh, Amy, you have any suggestions as to the best way to?
Also, Tom, Tom Viscardi is the Director of the Lake. He's also a swim coach at Northern Highlands. And this was his recommendation, and I am not, you know, a swim person or swimmer, and this was his recommendation. Um, he gave us valid reasons, and they, you know, they, the valid reasons that he gave to me made a lot of sense. We also have to take into consideration the whole entire lake, you know, so we do have to close down the lake for swim meets. Um, and it was, it works out better for the entire community to have that beach wide open, and people want to spread out now, and they use that whole entire beach now. Before, they didn't use the other side of the beach. So there is really a lot of advantages on the other side as well. And we did really weigh it out. We, we looked at both sides, and, you know, this to us was the best, the best location. Um, and we are working on the Fragmities.
There's an opportunity for us to like discuss this outside of this. That would be great, just because we feel we haven't been heard yet.
Well, I saw the emails, yeah, there was, I saw.
We didn't get to really discuss it.
Right, is, can you help arrange a meeting with Tom?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we know that it's done, and I can see that nothing's really going to change, but we did not feel heard.
Okay.
Then you're, you're here, so, um, Councilwoman Wazinski will help arrange the meeting with Tom.
Yeah, just shoot me an email, and then I'll, I'll set up a meeting with Tom, and he can talk about it again with all the other Lake Directors too. There's a lot of other managers too, that were also part of the decision.
Maybe we can come to one of our practices.
Sure, I'm there all the time. I, so I'm very aware of where they are, so I'm happy to pop over there, yeah.
All of my services, I'll bring, Chris, speak down.
Right, I was going to say, perhaps, I mean, some of the trimming of the Fragmities, I mean, they're, Amy's met with multiple, you know, uh, plant specialists in trying to really understand, and it's, they are, I mean, they, they, um, grow by three different methods. Like by the spores, they send out their roots and they burrow underground, so it is, is such a challenge. And the reality is, is obviously we can't use anything in the lake that's not safe for swimming, so it's really, it is a challenge. And I think that Ron, you've been great with Richie trying to get things trimmed down, and so it needs to be on a, you know, on a regular basis, because.
They just keep coming back.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm sure it's challenging, I'm just like concerned about.
Yeah, absolutely, I totally understand that.
And it still came back.
I, again, so you know, prior to this, my previous plan, I had, so I had, I had numerous Paul traffic. And this is not a neat situation, for Crestwood Lake. I'll, I'll off my services, when the Council makes a meeting with Tom, I'll come, Rick Fidel is a licensed operator. Of, you know, chemicals I'll bring in, and Dan Richards is my crew chief. And we'll see what we can do. And some of those concerns, I said, Rich brought the bleachers on today. Uh, I was over there, you know, we will trim next week. Weekly trim, uh, but they were visible, visible, even today. And we'll trim, trimming on weeks, and we did bring sand over even, and the, I can't make a beach for you. I don't have forty thousand in my budget right now, um, that, yeah, with the beach sand, but there was extra sand brought in, and if you saw, we repaired so I had, uh, we had fifteen piles of fifteen, one, one hundred fifteen, two hundred, two hundred twenty-five tons of sand. We did bring sand over today as well. So, yeah, so, yeah, I got the numbers. We did, we did some work. Thank you.
Thanks for coming, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so we are going into closed session. So I'm, we're going to close session, you guys are all going to have to leave, I'm sorry, I know that, that's.
You can wait outside.
And then when we come back, all we're going to do is just open it and close it again, so. I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two one seventy-nine to authorize the governing body. Thank you, Linda, conductor, all call.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Liva Solo? Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole is absent. Councilman Sasso?
Here.
Councilwoman Wazinski?
Here.
Thank you. After, um, we will be going to close, uh, session. I don't know how long that's going to take.
It's going to be quick.
Um, and then we're going to come back really just to adjourn the meeting, so there's no, there's no reason to, uh, we won't do anything after that. Uh, no formal action will be taken, minutes of the meeting will be taken, will be released to the public at the time, the matter is reserved, so. With that said.
It's not connecting, John, there's no displays again.
Walter, we are going to the closed session. Oh, nine eighteen, and the regular session has resumed. I would press a motion to adjourn the regular session. Thank you, second, Ed, all in favor? Thank you very much.